Twenty twenty five, we do have two public hearings, so we'll begin our meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. Jerry, could you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Could you please take the attendance?
Patrick Calvin.
Present.
Julianne Nolan.
Present.
Gerald O'Neil.
Present.
Edwin.
Present.
Juan Leon.
Present.
Daniel Truchon.
Present.
Frank Santos.
Greg Gaxiola.
Present.
Matt Esposito.
Present.
Mitch Casey.
Okay, do we have a quorum?
Yes, she does.
Do we have a quorum? Before we start the public hearings, I'm required to read this into the record, the Planning Board shall have the right to rely on any information that is presented by the applicant. If any such information is later found to be inaccurate or incorrect, the Planning Board may determine that any approvals, building permits, or other actions previously granted in connection with the application are null and void.
Item A, Public Hearing, Site Plan Review, Job 2436A, Forty-Two Seagull Boulevard, LLC. Purposes: To legally maintain building alterations and site improvements for the establishment of a bus depot at a vacant site.
Who's here on behalf of the applicant?
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, staff. Happy New Year. Appearing on behalf of the applicant, my name is Chris Tartaglia, Principal Engineer for the firm High Point Engineering, offices at one eight six zero Walt Whitman Road, Melville, New York, one one seven four seven.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do.
Please proceed, but before you do, we have a memo dated the twenty seventh of December twenty twenty four from the Planning Commissioner Denise Graziano outlining a series of conditions and covenants and restrictions. Have you had the opportunity to review this with your client?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I have.
Does your client have any concerns, any issues that you would like to bring to the attention of the board?
Just one point of clarification. Embedded in that memo is the standard condition for a fire sprinkler to be installed within the building. And we've had this matter discussion previously with folks in the town, particularly the Fire Marshal. And there is a provision in that code that dictates that unless the building is being modified in excess of forty percent or greater, or the floor area is being amended by a forty percent or greater number, then that provision is waived. So that is one item in the provisions that we would like to have waived based on those provisions, and we can certainly work with the Fire Marshal's office to have that set in stone.
And Matt, what is the, why is that in there? And what is, what is the amount of, are there any changes in the interior of the building?
There may have been a discrepancy in the exact percentage, so we can consult with the applicant and the Fire Marshal's office to ensure that they're not at fault.
Okay, thank you. Okay. Have you had that for the record? Of course. Okay. All right, please proceed.
Yes, thank you. And just for the record, that code section is Town Code Section two thirteen dash two three five entitled Sprinkler Systems. Just putting that on the record.
Well, they will review this with the applicant and with the Fire Marshal, and of course, Matt, from the Planning Board.
Wonderful, thank you. So with me tonight are a couple folks. One is Paul Scro from Total Transportation. Total Transportation is the both owner and operator of this facility. And I also have Amanda LaRosa from Stonefield Engineering, who is our traffic consultant and is certainly here to answer any questions relative to traffic or any other concerns that the board or the public may have. And of course, Mr. Scro will speak to the operations and just some company background on what Total Transportation does for the community. Just by means of some housekeeping, property is located at the southwest corner of Schlegel Boulevard and Commerce Boulevard in Amityville, and it is zoned G Industrial. As noted in the Planning Commissioner's memo, the application seeks approval to reestablish a use of the property as a school bus depot. Town records that we received via FOIL indicated that there are C of Os dating back to circa nineteen sixty-two where this use was established on the property, and since then, the use has been operated on again, off again, but in its most recent incarnation has been ceased for roughly ten to eleven years before being renovated and reoperated by Total Transportation. So in terms of my order of presentation, I'm going to briefly describe the property layout and the site plan features, and then have Mr. Scro come up again and just speak more towards the operations of the facility and who Total Transportation is and where they fit within the community. Because I think it's very important to note that the customers, the folks that this facility service are special needs children located throughout Nassau and Suffolk County and the local areas. So that is why the predominant use of the property, as you see in the aerial there, is for the vans, not the long buses. They're van transporters.
Is that going to change?
Excuse me?
Is that going to change? Or it'll just be the vans?
I believe so, but certainly Mr. Scro can speak to that. Thank you.
We'll ask that when you're...
Okay, so back to the engineering. Site plan description is as follows. So we have about a two-acre parcel here, just over two acres. It's bordered to the west by a church, two vacant lots, and a home that's located at the southwest corner of the property. All of those properties are zoned residentially. Commerce Boulevard borders the property to the east, and across that right-of-way by residences, and the Amityville Fire Department Station Number Two is directly across the street. Adjacent to the property to the south is a concrete pumping construction company, and that property is also located in the G Industrial District. North of the property is Schlegel Boulevard, and across the right-of-way is a townhouse complex named North Manor Estates. There are two curb cuts on the property, on, both only on Schlegel Boulevard, and those serve as a entry and exit only to the facility, with the westerly curb cut being an entry-only, thank you, Matt, and the easterly curb cut being the exit-only. There are two, at those curb cuts, there are sliding gates, so that when the facility is closed in the evening, those gates are fully closed and locked for the evening, allowing no access to the property. The property is also completely enclosed by a six-foot-high chain-link fence with plastic slats in it for screening. There's an existing building on the property which contains four thousand seven hundred and eighty-three square feet. That's the yellow item in the, on the screen. Inside that building, there is a three-bay garage where the vans and vehicles are serviced and inspected. And within that building, there's about seventeen hundred square feet of office area and a small one hundred and sixty-square-foot mezzanine which is used for storage. That is all to remain unchanged and existing. Parking, if we could go back to that site plan, Matt, thank you. So the required parking, I want to go over that first. The required parking for a facility like this is based on town code, and there's a couple of different ways to, a couple of different items in the description, but how to calculate it. But the total number of stalls required for this use are fifty-seven total stalls for employees. Now, the reason why I explained that there's different ways of their being calculated within the code because we actually have bus drivers here. So clearly, we need parking for bus drivers as well as employees. So the provided parking on the site, we have a hundred and forty-four total parking stalls. That comprises the vans, the ninety-seven van stalls, ten standard bus stalls, which are in the very rear of the property on the south side, and then thirty-seven employee parking stalls. So as the site plan shows, the parking is located all along the periphery of the site with an internal access lane in, that runs around the inside of those parking stalls, and basically creates a counterclockwise circulation movement for vehicles to come in, park, and then when they're on their exit, come back out through the exit curb cut to the east. Now, doing the math, I said that fifty-seven stalls are required by code, but there's ninety-seven vans and ten buses. So that's a hundred and seven buses, which I'm sure the board is thinking, well, wait a minute, that should be a hundred and seven stalls at least, plus the folks that work there. So that is true. Generally speaking, with this use, the predominant use of the stalls is that when a van pulls out, an employee pulls into one of the van parking stalls. So that is how these facilities are generally used. Now that said, this particular facility, because the vans tend to come and go at roughly the same time, there is an overflow of parking by about seventeen to nineteen parking stalls that are parked legally within the community. Now, I went into the facility this morning, so I got the most up-to-the-minute information, and I saw the vans pulling in and out, and there was parking along Schlegel Boulevard and along the north side of Schlegel and along the west side of Commerce Boulevard. Again, all legal onsite parking, off-site parking, excuse me, on-street. And it appeared to be operating very well. They were not blocking any driveways. They had the vehicles all parked very nicely and tight against the curb. And in speaking with the owners and operators, they really haven't had any substantive complaints about parking, which as I'm sure the board is aware, that's one of the key issues that we have with uses of this nature, that parking tends to be problematic. But in my opinion, having worked with several bus companies, it seems like they're really managing this one well. And I think that that probably has a lot to do with the fact that they're driving only the vans, and it's not the larger buses, which are much harder to negotiate in and out of the properties and into the parking stalls. So just with regard to some operational features, I just wanted to go through some of the data that we've obtained. So the hours of operation, Monday through Friday, five a.m. to six p.m. Now, these would vary a little bit, but generally, those would be the outer bounds. So they might open up at five-thirty and close at five-thirty p.m., but generally speaking, these are the outer bounds of when they'd be operational. And no weekend hours, no weekend operations at all.
Some.
Some? Okay. Sorry, there'll be some weekend operations, but they'd be minimal in nature? Thank you. As it relates to the number of employees, initially, we had provided data to planning in our application when we first filed that there would be roughly two hundred employees total employed at this facility. However, in further conferences with the operator and the owner, we find that actually they're running forty-five of those employees out of their Brooklyn location. So that number of, actually, total employees is reduced substantially down to a hundred and fifty-five. So again, just going back to the parking count and the parking discussion that we had, so we have a hundred and forty-four total onsite parking stalls. So even if we have that one hundred and fifty-five total employee count, we only have a maximum of eleven stalls that need to find parking elsewhere. And that doesn't take into account something that I actually saw this morning, which is where one of the drivers got out of their van, walked to the street, and got picked up by somebody to take them away. They didn't drive there. So out of that hundred and fifty-five people, those aren't all one hundred and fifty-five people driving to the site. I just wanted to make that point. So the actual breakdown of employees are seventy-five drivers and seventy-five monitors. Each bus has two employees on it, a driver and a monitor. Office staff is three, and mechanics are two. So the folks that are there all day are relatively small. It's only five employees in total. Again, just reiterating that what has been reported to me is that a maximum of twenty employee vehicles would find parking within the neighborhood. Again, this morning, I took a count, and it was about seventeen to eighteen. And the only other thing I wanted to mention operationally is that during the school year is obviously when we have the maximum number of employees there. During the summer, there are summer programs, however, too, that they will operate. So there will be roughly about half of those employees operating, about half of those routes running during the summer months. So with that, next up in the presentation, I just wanted to introduce Paul Scro from Total Transportation, and he can go through just a little bit of background of who Total Transportation is and how they're fitting into the community.
Excuse me, sir. Hold on, hold on, sir, sir. So just hold on. You'll get a chance to ask all your questions. First, the applicant has the opportunity to present their, make their presentation. Sir, state your name and address for the record.
Paul Scro. I am the District Manager for Total Transportation.
And your address?
Forty-Two Schlegel, three twelve Shore Road in Belmore. It's my home address.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, I do. Thank you all for having me. My name is Paul Scro. I'm the District Manager for Nassau and Suffolk Counties. I got my start on the Long Island operations as the location manager for what is now, you know, the Amityville, the budding Amityville operation. So the welfare of this particular location is near and dear to my heart. Total Transportation has been proudly serving students and their families in the New York metro area since two thousand and seven, and more recently, in both Nassau and Suffolk Counties since two thousand and twenty-one. We see ourselves as a community partner, not just a service provider. We specialize in pre-K special needs pupil transportation, providing safe and reliable transport two thousands in our community daily. Since moving into the area, we have made every effort to be good neighbors. We have provided outreach to the community and contact information should they have any questions or concerns about our operations at the site. One benefit of our engagement strategy has been the ability to offer employment opportunities to folks in this community. Since September, we have hired twelve employees from the Amityville area, including one who was hired as a monitor but is currently in CDL training and will advance to a driver position. We've also hired another eight employees from neighboring communities within fifteen minutes or so, with another in CDL training currently to hopefully move to a driver position. We are committed to providing free CDL training to existing employees and new applicants, not only to meet the demands for qualified drivers, but also to impart valuable and marketable skills onto members of our community. Based on the success of community hires, we've engaged with the town of Babylon Human Service Center and continue to recruit monitors and drivers. We hope that we are able to continue a successful operation with minimal disruption to our neighbors and to be afforded the opportunity to earn our place in the community. Thank you.
Before you go, just so we're clear, there will, this will be limited to small, to vans. Is that correct?
So the vast majority of the operations, however, there are some provisions for larger buses. Currently, there are no larger buses operating, but the way the industry works, a district could have a request specifically for a big bus. We might have capacity issues where we can't safely transport all the children on that route on a small bus. So I wouldn't want to provision for zero big buses, but that's not our goal, and that's not what we're pursuing right now. It just, it might come up, so we felt we should provision for it. There wouldn't be enough space if we were to make those all big buses.
Any other, any questions, Mr. Chairman?
Who do I talk to about the site?
About the site plan specifically?
Yeah, about the conditions of the site.
Let's, let's hold off any site plan questions. Anybody have any questions for the operating managers? No? Okay.
You had mentioned that there might be weekend. What would the hours of operation be on the weekend?
So definitely not early in the morning. No one's trying to wake up our neighbors at five a.m. on a Saturday or Sunday. Probably eight to ten a.m. start to twelve to two finish. Typically, it would just be, you know, shuttling buses to one of our other sites for DOT inspections, which we intend to get this site approved for DOT inspections so they could be done on-site. So that will also taper off. There might be charters we do in a limited capacity, training, things like that. Not full operations, not backing up, not, not running school bus routes during the weekend.
Any other questions?
So when you're talking weekend, is that Saturday and Sunday?
Usually Saturday. If we can't accomplish whatever we need to, we might do limited hours on Sunday. We try to avoid it. But sometimes there's, you know, particular trainings that, you know, we're provisioning for a space that we can do some training in classroom. There's a lot of training and regulations with regards to school bus drivers and monitors, so that, sometimes that's done on Saturdays. Less operational stuff on a Sunday, but maybe more administrative tasks. Sometimes there's, there's need to use the site on a Sunday. Again, that would be very limited, though.
You stated you're going to be servicing Nassau and Suffolk County?
Yes.
What parts of Nassau County will be serviced?
So the, because it's special needs, it's not generally in district transportation. There's limited amounts of schools that can provide service for, for those children. So they generally, it can be anywhere within the border of Nassau County, and they go to, you know, with twelve or so schools that we service. So really, it could, it could be anywhere. If they, if our contract manager says, hey, you know, you have a special needs child that needs transportation, we have to figure out where to place them and how to get them to school. So it can truly be from, you know, Valley Stream to, you know, Massapequa, really, North Shore or South Shore. It can be anywhere.
Valley Stream, that's a distance.
Yes, yeah. It's a logistical adventure for us.
So could you repeat the hours of operation again? Because if you're bringing in a bus from Valley Stream, potentially, you have buses coming in later in the evening.
Yeah, so the dismissal times are usually between two-thirty and three for all of our schools. So with that six p.m. outer limit of the return time, that, that should leave enough time and has historically left enough time, barring emergencies, a breakdown, an accident, which can happen. You know, obviously, we have to bring the children home and then bring the bus back. But by and large, we are finished servicing by, by six p.m.
Any other questions, Mr. Chairman? No? Okay.
Thank you.
Don't go far. Hi, Chris Tartaglia, again, if there's questions on the site design or site plan? Jerry, you had a question?
Okay, I visited the site and was very unhappy.
Today?
Today.
I see the snow. God, he's referring.
Very unhappy, excuse me, very unhappy with the west side of the property. What I found bordering a church, some residential properties, excuse me, was two old rusty chain-link fences about two feet apart. And inside those two fences were tires, rundown, broken-down old fences, tree limbs. If the site plan is accurate, this property extends quite a bit to the west of that, that chain-link fence.
Matt, could you bring up the site plan? I'm sorry. Thanks. Site plan?
If you see on there, the chain-link fence on the, on the top side of this is west, or is interior to the property. And what's on the other side of the chain-link fence is mess. The residents, the churchgoers pull into that area, and you see the pictures. That's what I found. Not acceptable. Typically, if this was a new application, there would be a big berm, a wide, high berm. There would be double stacks of pine trees to cushion this from the neighbors. You said there are the slats in the chain-link fence around the rest of the property. There's nothing in this chain-link fence except run-down bushes and vines. We need to address that.
Couldn't agree with you more, Mr. O'Neil. And just for the record, so we don't have permits yet, and, and we can't really make any of these site improvements. They are indeed there and operational because of a other significant lease issue that they had with their prior landlord. But they are indeed there operating, and they will absolutely make any and all repairs and upgrades to this facility as needed. There is, I agree with you, and this is certainly not something that, that these folks want to see either. Interestingly, there is very interesting that I noticed, too, that the fences are very far on, you know, the applicant's property. It looks like the folks next door have been getting the free use of the property for quite a while. What I mean is that the, the fence, when there's a six-foot-high fence, it's difficult to go around the outside of that fence and clean up the mess, but certainly, they will.
I don't think there's any difficulty. There are two streets that enter your property.
Right.
St. John's in Ephesus. There's easy access to the outside of your property, outside of those fences.
Again, I'll state for the record, they will absolutely clean this place up.
Okay, well...
When needed, and when they get the permits from the town to do the work.
Okay, but we're looking at a site plan that we have to approve or disapprove. And right now, it states existing landscaping to remain. No.
If you'd like to see some more buffering?
I need to see another site plan.
How about a relocation of the fence to the property line so we can control our property, too?
Good idea.
Great.
Show me.
Love it. Love it.
Okay.
Yeah. Appreciate your suggestions.
Thank you.
Hey, Juan?
Good afternoon, evening. So I have a question regarding the environmental status. So I have two questions. The first question being, after further review of the site plan based on the soil borings, the historical fill material, there was historical fill material identified, such as red brick. So my first question is, are you aware of that?
Yeah, and I've also been made aware of some environmental reports that were prepared for the property. I believe they were mentioned and included in the application that was submitted to planning. And the upshot of those reports was but for the urban fill, which is not necessarily an environmental concern as much as it is just a structural concern if we want to build on it, as I'm sure you're aware. The property has gotten a clean bill of health. There's no open spill numbers with the E.C. Everything's been closed out from what I recall seeing. I'm not an environmental consultant, but the report I saw, it was a few years old, but it did seem to give the property a clean bill of health from, from what I recall. And we can certainly look into that further, but that's my recollection.
All right. So my second question is, really, I would just like to confirm that any historical fill encounter during the construction will be properly disposed of in, by following, by following New York State D.C. regulations. Is that correct?
Certainly. And, and I guess I'm glad that Matt has that particular item on the screen up there. So the boxes that you see, they may look like there's buildings with the dash lines, but what those are are the new drainage systems that's going in after we get the permits. So those are the areas of excavation, and indeed, anything that is excavated from this property will be disposed of properly. And as you can see, there's fairly significant excavation where these drainage systems are going. So they will certainly be disposed of properly.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
What questions?
The...
I'm sorry. Underground storage tanks, were, were there any, were they removed, were they signed off on by Suffolk County?
Yes, they were all removed. That was part of that report that I saw that I referenced, and they were all removed. And there's no tanks on record with Suffolk County at this point, so they all were removed properly. And again, if I didn't provide that report to planning, I certainly can do that, but I know that I reviewed it, and I thought we appended it to the application. I just would have to check.
And...
Sure. I believe there were four in total, and actually, going back through the town records, I saw several applications for installations of tanks, removals of tanks, et cetera. But don't quote me on that number. I didn't, I'm not sure, but I think there were four tanks in total on the property.
Okay, so based on preliminary records from Suffolk County Townhouse Services, they say that there may be possible eleven hospital storage tanks registered at the site under the name First Student. So, yes, they control them both storage.
What?
I have a storage number which is identified, zero seven three two one. Based on the record, possibly ten out of eleven things have been moved. If you guys can return, that object removed, or if you guys can get back to us regarding that?
Yeah, we will. Honestly, that's a surprise to me. First Student was the prior operator at the facility, and those eleven might have been above-ground tanks that maybe were inside the building. You know, that would register anything over, I think it's thirty gallons, but we'll certainly look into it and get back to you. Thank you for that information.
One more.
Frank?
Any hydraulic lifts that are either in-ground or underground that are going to be used or removed?
No, there's none in the building now, and any lifts that will be used will be the above-ground post type, that bolt to the floor, nothing below.
Other questions? Julianne?
And can you talk about the maintenance repairs? I think that you said that you're going to have mechanics on-site. Is this a public garage also?
Um, can I kick that to you?
Yeah.
Yeah, I could just, could you just describe what's done to the buses and the bases?
It, so first of all, to...
State your name.
Oh, I'm sorry. Paul Scro.
For the record, go.
So the, the fleet is largely very new. They're twenty-twenty-one vehicles for the most part and newer. So there is limited maintenance required, but it's not a public garage. It's just for the maintenance of the vehicles. Oil changes, lights, occasionally there might be some internal engine work that's being done. Oil changes, lights, occasionally, there might be some internal engine work that's being done. But your, your basic maintenance of a fleet and solely this fleet, not, not any public cars or any personal, personal vehicles. Changing tires, stuff like that.
One other question. Are these gas or diesel?
These are gas. I believe the whole fleet is gas. Yeah, the entire fleet is gas.
So there's no warming up, sitting there idling?
No, no, and we, you know, for, because of idling regulations, we have campaigns to limit. We have technology on the buses to report any idling and we have campaigns to limit that with the employees. No idling in the, in the yards. And even if they're idling out in, on public streets, we'll get, we'll get a, you know, a ping and we can address the employee. So could you clarify what response? Oh.
You have to state what he just told you.
Sorry. Sorry, everyone. Yes, we would, we would have Speedy Dry to address the incidents that you're talking about. The maintenance shop is equipped with that and trained for that. If you would like us to submit one, absolutely, sure.
One minor thing. Says that the front, the gate, the fence in the front of the building is going to be changed. What's that going to be changed to? I know it's a six-foot chain link fence.
Yeah, it's six-foot chain link with slats. That's the proposal.
That's what it's saying now.
Yeah.
The site plan says it's going to be changed.
Yeah, we're just moving it to accommodate those gates that I mentioned, the gates that are, the sliding gates at the driveways. They're there now, but they don't function that well. So we just have to move the fence to make the gate work. So it's a good time, Mr. O'Neill, to address those other fence issues that you were talking about. So we can add those to the, to the plan. Do all the fences. We have a number of people that would like to address the board regarding this application.
Do we have a Joseph Crowe?
Oh, yeah, that's me.
Did you want to speak? James Benson?
Mr. Benson, come on up. Okay, could you please state your name and address for the record?
James Benson, 23 Chestnut Road, Amityville, New York.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
I just wanted to speak on the aspect of the company in the, in the neighborhood of Amityville. A little bit louder, how's this?
Thank you. You can pull it down if you want.
Okay. I've lived in Amityville for 46 years. We had the house built in 76. And this company in the neighborhood is really benefiting the community with, basically with jobs for, for everyone. I was instrumental in going around in the neighborhood, because I know a lot of people in the immediate neighborhood looking for jobs, for those who, a lot who were unemployed. And this gave them a chance to do something different, you know? Get their license, study for the Class B and everything, so gave them hope. And a lot of them have come in and filled out applications. And he said, they have been, a lot of them have been hired and some of them are still going through it. So the benefit of the company in the immediate neighborhood is really, it's been really great, absolutely. And especially for me too, short of distance.
Thank you very much.
Sean Fancher?
State your name and address for the record.
Shawna Fancher, 62 Bertrand Avenue.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Please proceed.
Well, since the... Oh, is this better?
We keep a very careful record of what everybody's...
I'm sorry, I'm short.
It's complete, so.
Okay. Is this better for you?
Go ahead.
Cool. So since the yard came into Amityville, it made it really convenient for everybody in the neighborhood. I, I get to walk there every day, walk home. Makes it way easier than taking an Uber, paying so much money, just wasting gas or whatever. And you get to see like a whole bunch of smiling faces from age range. A lot of people saying it makes it more convenient. I see people walking from left, from right, early in the morning. Soon as I get there, everyone's happy. They're like, this makes it more convenient for us.
Do you work there?
Yes, I do. I'm a monitor. I'm a monitor on a bus. So soon as I get there, I mostly clean the bus, help out wherever I can to see if anybody needs help and get to see the little smiling kids' faces in the morning.
That's good. Well, you're doing important work. Get, get children there safely and home safely.
Yes.
Thank you.
Is there a Lynette Reynolds?
Come on up.
Come on down.
Well, that's a different show. This is the planning board, sorry. Sorry, we have no prizes, but we do want to hear from you. Please state your name and address for the record.
Lynette Reynolds, 6 Commerce Boulevard, Amityville.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
Good evening, everyone. I live on Commerce Boulevard. I've been in Amityville since 1973. And yes, multiple bus companies have been at that site. This one came in at the end of August and it is chaotic on that street with traffic, parking on Commerce Boulevard, Schlegel Boulevard, and on Miller. And people's homes that are on Commerce, the rear of their home is on Miller, so their private property that's in the back on their fence, the employees of this bus company park there, not realizing it is someone's private property. When they eat, they throw food out of their car windows. Cigarette butts are out. They don't clean up after themselves. They are really not trying to be good neighbors. They operate seven days a week, 5:30 AM to 7:00 PM. And yes, there have been large buses on site at this facility since they came there in August. So they are not giving you the whole rundown. And as far as the underground and the barrels underground and the tanks, there are still some there. Because yes, there are 11. I researched it myself. And they only taken out three, not four.
Does anybody have any questions?
It's very chaotic in this neighborhood now with parking. It's crazy. You can't get out to Schlegel at all with the traffic coming in and out. And then the school buses passing by and then those that are already on regular routes in Amityville and Colpeck School District. You get there, you got to stop, you got to be careful and look out. The fire department, even if they have an emergency, it's, it's too much. It's really, it's a lot. It's a lot. And I don't know what other renovations they're trying to make on this site. But between that, the New York pump station, New York pump station also leases some of their parking to a mosquito company that's there during the summertime. There's, come on the street, I invite you to come any day of the week, between 5:30 and 7:00 so you can see what happens.
Stick around. Let's just go where, where. Now, where is your house in relation to what we're looking at?
I'm on 6th. I'm on the other end.
On the other end, okay.
Mm-hmm. But you have people that park down as far as there because, and they get people to drop them off because they're parking at the dialysis center that's on Great Neck Road and Commerce Boulevard. So some of the employees use that parking spot. And then they'll have someone come down and pick them up to drive them down to the bus company because that's how limited parking is.
Wait, Matt, where is their dialysis center? That's all the way, right there, okay.
Yes, and I'm right across the street from Dialysis on Commerce.
Okay. And New York pump station, of course, is right next to it.
Correct. But that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for coming down tonight. We appreciate it.
Albert Belcher?
Okay, Mr. Belcher, please state your name and address for the record.
Sure, Albert Belcher, 134 Larson Drive, Amityville, New York.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for even entertaining all of this.
Hold on. This is what...
You do. I know, this is what you do. I get it.
I just want to make it clear.
Yeah.
You don't have to thank us. This is our job. We need to hear from you.
Well, I still have to thank you.
So we appreciate you coming down.
Because it took long enough.
Okay, so go ahead.
All right. I've lived in the community since 2004. And as some of the people have stated already, there've been a number of bus companies there. And then we went a long period of time, almost 11 years, without anything there. I've spoken with a couple of the individuals, a manager that worked there because our major concern is we're directly adjacent to the bus depot, directly across the street. Our entrance and exit...
Where, where are you in relation to?
Larson Drive.
Oh, okay. Where, where is that? There's Commerce, Larson...
Both of Schlegel.
Schlegel.
Mm-hmm, Larson Drive. There you go, right there.
Oh, there we go, okay. Oh, they're in the townhouses.
Correct.
Okay.
All right. So our biggest issue is exiting and entering. It's creating a major issue for a lot of people in the community. We have 37 homeowners there, plus their children. Most of their children catch the bus right outside of that location. In the morning, it's creating a situation where they're either getting dropped off or picked up, picked up in the middle of the street. And a lot of that's because we have parking where we did not have parking for the last over 10 years. And it's just like anything else, people get used to a certain thing. But our biggest problem is that view. There's, that sightline is being obstructed by those individuals that are parking there. Now, they gave a number of 17 to 19 vehicles. I did my own survey and in a week's period of time, I counted 101 vehicles total, averaging out to about 20, 20 cars. We have placed cones just on the outside of our entrance, which seem to be constantly be, moving closer and closer to our, our exit and entrance point on there. They're being moved by the employees because they need someplace to park. And I get that. We get that. But it's creating a major issue for us. When I come out of there in the morning, I, I literally have to creep because I can't see to my left. And I can't even see to my right half the time because vehicles are being parked. And these are all size, sizes of vehicles. Now, right there, currently, if, right where your, your arrow is, we have two cones parked there, I mean, parked over there, about maybe 15 feet total. There and on the other side, which is still not enough space. So our request is having no parking signs on that side of the street, at least from Columbus to Comherz. And maybe, you know, there's a big lot there. I don't know who owns that lot that's adjacent to the church. And maybe they can create some form of parking there. They have used it, I think in the very beginning, before they had the ground paved. All of their employees were parking in there. I don't know what kind of approval they may have gotten for that, but they were utilizing that. But they're parking everywhere. I mean, on, on Columbus, Comherz, I think even on Miller at one point. And I know it's them because, you know, after a certain period of time, I think around 10 or 11 o'clock, all the cars are gone. And then they show back up later on.
Matt, can you go pull that out a little bit further so we can see? Now, where is that lot that you were just referring to where people park? Okay, right there.
You see it? Yeah.
Adjacent to the church, okay. One of the stipulations, one of the conditions here is that the planning department acknowledges that there is a deficiency in parking and says if substantial complaints regarding spillover parking or parking in areas not designated for parking are received by the planning department, the commissioner shall notify the property owner by certified mail to rectify such parking problems. When you come back up, I want to hear your answer to that. Okay?
Do, I mean, I, you know who the property owner is of that, correct? All right.
Who is the property owner?
Well, I don't know. I was asking you.
Yes, we do know. Do I know? No, I don't know.
Yeah, I figured you would.
The planning department.
All right. Can I leave this letter with your...
Yes.
Okay.
Give it to Matt, please, and it'll be part of the record. Okay, anything else? Thank you.
Norma Smith?
Good evening. Please state your name and address for the record.
My name is Norma Smith. My address is 135 Schlegel Boulevard in Amityville, New York.
Hey, do you want to speak as well?
She's just with me.
I am her daughter, Jessica Jiggetts.
Well, state your name for the record so we have you as part of the official record forever.
Yes, I am her daughter. My name is Jessica Jiggetts.
Okay, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth.
Okay, please proceed.
I've been living at that address since 1981. When I first moved there, the bus company was there, but it was not like it is right now. Then it went away. Then something else came. They had a repo, like a repo place. We had no, no notice from the town, nothing. No sign went out. I called the town. I complained. And obviously, I wasn't the only one complaining because it was gone like a week later. But my complaint right now is about the parking. I heard the gentleman said that they didn't receive any complaints. I have called, I have complained, like the gentleman before me said, we have to put cones out. Because if we have company, well, I live in Schlegel. If I have company and your block in my mailbox, my mailman can't get to my mailbox. And if I have company, there's no place for them to put their car. Not only that, on the other side of my, the other side of the property on Comherz, that is my property too. And they're parked all along the sides. And when I call and I complain, I told them that they were parking half up and half down, which is eroding my property. He said, oh, I'll come and I'll look. I haven't heard another word from them. They're still, some of them are still doing it. And like the previous gentleman stated, it's hard to come off your driveway. It's creating blind spots. And it's not just their buses, it's everybody's buses. And it's, 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 at 5:00, I can hear the beep beeps, the noise, you know? I don't want to be up at 5:00 every day. I'm not happy.
Where is your house?
Right on the corner of Columbus and Schlegel. Yes.
Oh, up there, okay, right there. And that's the, no, no, hold on, Columbus and Schlegel. Across from the church? Oh, over there. Is it on that side where the arrow is?
I'm across from that. They said it was an empty lot and they didn't know who was for it. That empty lot is, I think it's for the church that's Ephesus, that's across the street. Okay, because they maintain it, so I'm assuming it's theirs. Those churches has always been there for as long as I've lived there. I've never had a complaint with any one of them. You know, they're only there on Sundays, maybe on a Wednesday night, so it really doesn't bother me, but this is every day. That's all I got.
Anything else? Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I just wanted to say that...
Say your name again.
Oh, my name is Jessica Jiggetts again. I am the daughter of Norma Smith. G.I.G.G.E.T.T.S.
Okay, go ahead.
So my mom, as she previously stated, she's on the corner of Columbus and Schlegel, right? So across the street is Grace Community Church. To the left, there is a church. And then across the street directly in front of her is that open parking lot where there is a church. Keep in mind, the corner of Columbus and Schlegel services every school district in Colpeck. So every elementary school, every middle school and high school, it does service because I grew up in that house. So that was the same bus stop for all. So when I come to visit my mom in the morning sometimes to check on her, to make sure she's okay, she's stressed because as she previously stated, they're on her property, they're in front of her property. And it does create, honestly, a hazard. Because even me driving a truck pulling into her driveway, I'm a backer. I don't pull in, I back in. It still creates a problem because you still can't see to the... creates a problem because you still can't see to the left or to the right of you. And keep in mind, there's multiple buses coming and dropping off and picking up kids. I do understand that they're saying that they are helping the community, but you have to take into consideration the people that's been there for many years prior to them coming in. They are servicing jobs, but they need to find a space to put those vehicles in because it is honestly and truthfully not fair to the people that's been there for a very long time.
Not only that, I've observed their employees that's parked along Columbus, they walk off the street, onto my driveway, and cut across my lawn. I really don't appreciate it. I've said something when I called. But I caught them doing it after I called as well. So that needs to be addressed. Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. And thank you both for coming tonight.
Next, we have Steve Hackett.
Mr. Hackett. Good evening. State your name and address for the record.
My name's Steve Hackett.
You can pull that up, that microphone up for you.
You want me to?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And what is your address again?
129 Larson Drive. I'm in the back of that street across.
Okay.
As was stated, they put cones on each side. That doesn't matter. You still, your line of sight is blocked, you know. You should have nothing there. You could have 30 feet, and still, you don't see the car. If a car is coming, you don't see it, you know. So with the cones, matter of fact, I think it was Thursday or Friday, like I said, the cones keep moving around. Guys in a pickup truck, he just ran them over and parked right there on the edge. So now there is really the worst-case scenario. And like, you know, you're creeping out, you're creeping out. It's like playing Russian roulette. Somebody's going to get hurt. I've been to the police. They said, we'll monitor it. They said, there's nothing we can do. They said, come to you. I came to you. They said, we'll monitor it. And it's just a matter of time. And I told the cops. I said, somebody's going to crash here, and it's going to be an issue. But, you know, it's too late for somebody. And I have to go, well, I don't have to. But my mother moved right around the corner. So I find myself going out that entrance at least a couple of times a week, back and forth to deal with her. It's really bad. It's really bad, you know. And why they have no parking signs in front of their property? Why would that be? And even going up Commerce, halfway up Commerce, it's no parking signs. Why would it not be all right to park in front of their own company? And all of this, this wouldn't be an issue if they didn't have the signs in front of their property. It really makes no sense. You know?
Okay. Anything else?
Oh, Saturday and Sunday, that's early morning. They're going to be running buses in there. And that's seven days a week. Luckily, I live in the back. But for the people in my community in the front, they're going to take the brunt of that. When I moved in there, I looked and saw that building. That was before they moved in. And I said to myself, I don't want to see that every day when I wake up. And that was a good move on my part. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for coming down this evening. Next.
Amanda Bissell. Reverend Charlene Coward.
Reverend, please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, without my title, I'm Charlene Aiken Coward. But I am part of the faith community, and I am Reverend Charlene Coward.
By the way, you should use that title all the time because you've earned it.
Yeah.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
Yes, sir. I do plan to tell the whole truth and nothing but the truth. In regards to everything that I heard so far, nothing but the truth should be told. Because I live at 44 Commerce Boulevard in Amityville, which I am directly across from like 10 mini buses. I noticed they came into the community on September 3rd. I've been living in my home since I was eight years old, and that was in 1975. There was a bus company there. Some came, some left. But at that time, sir, there were no homes built up in my community. So now, it's all built up. That means more people, more residents, more cars, more people, more children. And my concern is, it's hazardous. Whatever you can define that word of, it's hazardous. I understand that this is a company that services special needs children. I have special needs children in my home. I am the 12th child of 16 children. And I've been living in Amityville all my life. I was born in Colpeck. I'm giving it all out because if you want to know who I am, I'm the most friendliest, caring, loving, and giving person. I have been calling the town. I even tried to call when total transportation first came in my community to let them know, hey, my bedroom window, I smell fumes. Could you tell them not to let the buses run for 45 minutes, sometimes 30 minutes, but tops 45 minutes? I am there. I have cameras around my home. I have floodlights. Whenever the buses, some of them come, at first, they were testing the buses in front of my home. And they say they have these business hours. Those buses start, they have like a watch person, I guess. At first, I thought it was one person starting all the buses up and just letting them run until the drivers came. But what they do is, the buses all start up close to 6:00 in the morning, and then they depart like 6:35, 6:40. That's a lot of time for me to inhale and smell these fumes. And why I say that is because when they came on September 3rd, I smelt gas. And then I'm like, I don't know if it's gas or diesel, but then I found out later on it's gas. But my thing is this, when you've been, you know, living and getting older, I don't need to inhale fumes because I'm in a residential area since 1975. There are plenty of places where things can be house-appropriate. But the other issue that I do have is, we have a 24/7 Amity, North Amityville Fire Department that functions, and they go out tops 10 times a day. We have the police that are going up and down the street. And it's also an obstruction of view because there's another company that's right across the street from me again, unfortunately, the mosquito squad. And they have 23 employees that has cars that are parked up and down by the mailbox, the whole shit. They have mailbox, I got to put garbage out, I got to put newspaper out, I got bottles out. Have people parked all along the street, had to call the police, had to call the town, 311 number. And then, they're seasonal. But when the bus company came in September on the 3rd, they're parking all alongside where those mosquito guys usually park. So when next year comes, when the, well, we are in next year, Happy New Year, by the way. But when March comes, they're going to have double the cars on the street. It's just not enough parking. It's just not enough space. It's not a suitable space. I heard the gentlemen say that they have a certain amount of minivans. I might have counted close to 70. I'm right there. I'm right there. And not only do they have the drivers who are parking, they also have matrons who have to park their cars. So to address some of my neighbors in the community, when these cars are coming out on Schlegel, like me, for instance, I can't see. I saw the cones. I had cones in front of my house at one time. And I had to go to Phelps Lane and talk about that, another issue. But when I try to get out on Schlegel, they have a person out there to direct their drivers. But what about me? What about the other people in the neighborhood who cannot see getting out? You do have to creep. You do have to be careful. And I know how to drive. I've been driving for a long time. But what about the children? My children all graduated college state guard, but I got grandkids. What about if they have to go to the bus stop, or not even my kids, other kids? It's not safe for them to see. A bus driver can only do but so much and put their flashes out. But if you've got somebody that's rushing or drunk or high coming out, then somebody's going to get killed. Or either in a bad wreck because it's not enough space. And to address the church, again, I told you I was in the faith community. That church is Ephesus Church, okay? That's their parking. And yes, the cars were parking there. They were parking on Columbus. They were parking on Schlegel. They were parking on Miller Avenue. Of course, on my street, but Miller Avenue. And it was so tight. Miller is narrow. It's so tight to get through and navigate safely. So I really pray and hope that this is really considered. No hard feelings to what they're trying to do and support the children with special needs. But there's also other vehicles. I've seen trucks there. I can see it. My bedroom window is right there. Trucks. There's, at first, it was some larger buses for a moment. But regardless to all of what was said, it's all about what's safe. What is the safe thing? What about my health? Do I have to continue when I want to open my window when April and May come and I have to smell gas and be at my cardiologist and my pulmonologist that I'm inhaling all of these fumes? I can't enjoy having, even my air conditioning, you can still smell it coming through because it's too many. I'm sorry, I ain't going to take much time, but that's what I wanted to say.
Oh, thank you.
You're welcome. And I thank each and every one of you for listening to us because it's extremely important. And if we can find common ground to support, you know, maybe something different, but not this.
All right.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you very much.
God bless.
Thank you very much for coming out this evening.
Amanda Rosa.
Amanda LaRosa?
No.
Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to address the board? Have you filled out a-
Armando Vigil.
Is he on the list?
You said your name is what?
Armando Vigil, Vigil, V-I-G-I-L, 42 Commerce Boulevard.
Hold on, we're just going to do this.
Sure.
Okay. Again, please state your name and address for the record.
Armando Vigil, 42 Commerce Boulevard, Amityville.
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Please proceed.
Yes. My neighbor, my previous neighbor, Charlene, she said them all. So really, nothing much left for me to say. But I see the impact. This environment, and it's really risky now. That is, we got a beautiful home right across the street. I'm unfortunately right across from the mosquito company, right there. And they park, when they moved in in the summer, I didn't, but I wanted the board to come over in the summertime. When spring comes, you'll see what we're talking about. There's hundreds, a hundred, I will say a hundred vehicles just on my block. They block my driveway. They block and park in front of me. The day I say, this guy madness here, somebody going to get argument, I set up the cones. But the town, unfortunately, the town code person, he came and gave me the summon.
Putting out the cones?
Because of the cones. He told me, he gave me the summon. And he said, because of the cones, that I'm not supposed to set up a cones on the street. Because the street is not mine. It belongs to the town. I said, okay, I pay taxes to the town. So I have the right not to people to come parking in front of my mailbox and everything. But my suggestion is a better suitable place for that company. But that bus company is better suitable place somewhere else. But that's a neighbor. There's a lot of children. Like I said, it's a beautiful home right across the street. Very expensive home, $800, $900,000 homes. And the impact, it's not just the environment. We got a 6:00 in the morning, buses running, burning fuel, burning gas, the smell, 70 buses. It's a big impact. But the road, if you come and look at the roads, how much traffic is going in and out in Commerce Boulevard? And then we had, like you say, we had a fire, active firehouse right there. Not, just pretty much in the corner, destroying Boulevard. And in the back of Columbus, there is a bus line. I forgot what's the bus line, 70, but there's a Suffolk, Suffolk Bus Company that they service the community.
Right. We just heard about that a little earlier.
Public transportation, whatever it is, a public transport for everybody. So you can imagine all the traffic that it set up. It's very unsafe. It's very, like he said before, it's sometimes, later, something's going to happen and we all going to regret. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you for coming out this evening. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to address the board regarding this application? No? Okay, sir, could you come on up? We've got a problem here. And you haven't been a good neighbor. So tell us how you want to, tell us how this is going to change. People moving cones? Should we just require that there be no parking anywhere around? Then where are your employees going to go? Do you have a plan to shuttle them from another parking lot? What are the options since you have insufficient parking on your existing site?
Mr. Chairman, I agree that there's been some really important testimony here tonight that I was not aware of. Again, I viewed the facility three times, and again, including up until this morning. And I saw a much less chaotic, much less different story. But I'm not refuting what the folks say. They live there and they're watching it every day. So I totally understand that, and I'm not going to refute that at all. I do agree, I think that we need some retooling perhaps, and some plans of attack to address the concerns. But one thing I did want to mention, and it, kind of walking into this meeting, I knew, even at our initial meeting with Matt and Rachel when she was here at the time, we said the P-word was going to be the issue with parking. We knew that. They always are with these-
Hold on for a second.
Just let me finish.
Hold on.
But what I would mention though-
You smiled when you said that. Parking is a major concern that this board has.
Agreed. And I just want to finish my sentence here, if I may, Mr. Chairman. That being that we see, I saw today, a much less chaotic situation than was described. I saw the parking stalls in front of the firehouse, which there is the only no parking signs in the area, completely being respected because that's how the emergency vehicles get in and out of the firehouse. What I also saw was legal, currently, legal parking everywhere, Mr. Chairman. So I understand that these neighbors are impassioned and upset, and I understand it completely. But all the vehicles I saw are legally parked on the street. There are no other no parking restrictions. So perhaps this is something that we need to work with the town to create no parking zones so that people are not being parked legally, that are not parking legally are ticketed. Or they just don't park illegally. But right now, they're all parked legally. It's an important point. That's really the only comments I have. Just the only other question or answer that I had is Mr. Beltr, who spoke, you know, very sufficiently about taking his own poll of the parking. And he said he counted 101 stalls in a week, about 20 stalls a day. I testified that I saw 17 to 19. So we're kind of in agreement that the parking is 17 to 19. I guess it's just all in the delivery. So I'll leave it at that.
And can I ask-
And if there's any other questions.
Can I ask a follow-up question regarding the buses idling for extended periods of time?
I need the operations folks to answer that, sir. I'm sorry.
Well, I'd love to have him come on. Does anybody have any questions for this guy?
Paul Scro.
Okay, Mr. Scro, go ahead.
Ed? I'm mostly concerned with the neighbors stating that there's a possibility of more fuel tanks on the ground that you're not aware of. And if we have a possibility of leaching, that's a huge problem.
Of cour-, and we take that very seriously. So as Chris alluded to, there was an environmental, in-depth environmental study that we got the chance to look over, done by the previous owners. And it was extensive and seemed to indicate that there are no more tanks that they have all been removed. So I mean, I'm happy to look into that further. We would be just as concerned if there were tanks that we didn't know about.
I'd definitely look into that further.
So out of curiosity, do you, you guys lease this property, correct? It's not, you don't own it?
Correct. We lease it.
Okay. And so from your prior statement, you said that you started servicing the Nassau Suffolk area in 2021. How long have you been at this site?
Since September, this past September, 2024.
Okay. And then where are your other locations within the area?
So we have a giant hub in Brooklyn, in East New York. And then our affiliate companies have locations in Hicksville and Freeport, and some in Suffolk County, Shoreham, Middle Island.
And when you say affiliates, are you like, is there another person that's a district manager such as yourself that oversees those?
No, no. So I cover all of the locations in Nassau and Suffolk with more of a focus on Nassau because it's just less, less attention needed on Suffolk in that regard. because it's just less, less attention needed on Suffolk in that regard.
So the other sites, are they also laid out similarly to this?
Yeah, I mean, it depends on obviously the neighborhood that the location is in, but the general idea and setup is generally the same. With buses, you know, around the perimeter, obviously town approvals permitting and, you know, limited by the, you know, where the location is. If there's main roads and stuff, we take all that into consideration.
One of the comments from the residents was that the buses start at around, closer to six o'clock. So is there a person that goes and starts them all up prior to the drivers getting there?
Generally, no. Usually the drivers will come in and, so we have staggered start times usually. It's like fifteen or thirty minute windows. So sometimes we'll, we'll have, like if it's in the colder months, I might have a lot person or like a matron or a driver that wants to make some extra money, come in a little early. Generally, they'll start it for fifteen minutes tops, but we, just to warm it up, but that's not like, that's not the usual. That might be what they're referring to, but that's, that's not, it's definitely not our procedure. And that's something that we can easily and forcefully address with the employees because of those metrics.
If the board acts for the SOPs that your company has on pulling in and idling times and all that, would you be able to provide that to the town?
Sure, yeah, yeah.
All right, that's all I got.
Any other questions? Julianne?
I just want to read into the record and for the audience, since there is a question on hours of operation. Condition number sixteen does state, "Hours of operation for the subject premises shall be limited to five AM to six PM, Monday through Friday, and eight AM to two PM on Saturday and Sunday." As a personal comment, we've had applicants come in that are doing multiple residences. And sometimes they think when they have a certain size lot, that they can add more apartments for revenue or whatever. To me, it seems like this would be great for the community, but it needs to be downsized to fit your community. Just a personal comment.
Okay. Any other questions? We do have on file a environmental report from Castleton Environmental. It's dated March 2023. Is this the most up-to-date report that you have?
I believe that's the one we submitted yet.
That's the one you submitted, okay. All right, we're gonna be looking at this very, very carefully. And we'll probably, our environmental will be in touch with you, okay? Let's, let's get back to the idling. Why would you have these trucks, oh, I'm sorry, these vans idle for fifteen, twenty minutes?
Generally, to, the employees sometimes like to do that to warm them up in the colder months so that when they get on it, you know, number one...
But we're hearing from the reverend, for example, who's right across the way there, that this goes on in the summer as well.
Yeah.
Probably to put the air conditioning on.
Yeah. So it's a similar temperature dependent issue. It's not, you know, something that management condones, but when you're, you know, you're running an operation, sometimes, you know, a single person can do that and that's what, that ends up being noticed. It also helps reveal sometimes like a mechanical issue. So a mechanic might be turning it on to see, hey, it was in the shop yesterday, let me just see if it's running correctly. You know, it, it shouldn't be happening and I totally understand the concerns from the community and that's a serious thing. And that's something we're gonna be keeping in mind and addressing, you know, even, even stronger.
Okay, one of, one of the covenants here is, is number ten, that says, "No idling is permitted at any time, and the owner is required to post signs, 'No idling of engines, no exceptions.'" You aware of that? Do you have, do you have an objection with, to that?
No, I mean, from an operational standpoint, I can, you know, ensure that we achieve that.
Okay, well, it's important that you look at the story very carefully. Dan?
Back to the parking issue. Would, I'm sure we're gonna talk later and discuss with the town, but would you guys have any objection if we requested that you look in the neighborhood to see if there's an empty parking lot that you could create an agreement with and then have some type of shuttle to reduce the amount of individuals, of your employees parking on the streets and have a designated parking lot?
Sure, yeah. And we also, we have, right now, the current parking is, again, I was under the impression there was less of a parking issue than I've been informed of today. So helpfully by the neighbors, because we care about this stuff. We don't want to just be upsetting people and doing nothing. And, you know, I do apologize if there have been complaints and we haven't addressed strongly enough. But there are, you know, there should be additional spots with the, the method of pulling the buses out and parking in that spot. Not every employee is doing that. So that's something I could sit with the location manager and plan out to see if we can all but eliminate or get as close as possible to reduce that parking. You know, again, it was our understanding that it was legal, but we were trying to minimize it, just given the size of the operation, to end up with twenty vehicles, we thought was not so outrageous. But I heard loud and clear, everyone's upset about the parking and we're, we're gonna take that seriously.
Yeah. To that point, I was there around three o'clock again today, and there were a lot of empty spots where the buses had left, and there were a lot of cars on the street.
Yeah.
So I think you have a solution, it's just a question of implementing it.
Right, right. And logistically, if we didn't feel that that was fully necessary, sometimes in the morning, that can be logistically harder than just not having to do the pull-in, pull-out. But it definitely appears that that's necessary. Again, I apologize, I thought that the issue wasn't as, you know, upsetting to the community as, as I now know it is.
On having to do, not with the parking, but was there a traffic study done?
Yes, there was.
And?
There was a traffic study done. It was submitted to planning, completed and submitted to planning last week. So copies are going in to the town for the boards and the staff review as well. And it seems more about perhaps parking than traffic, but we do have Amanda LaRosa from Stonefield who prepared the traffic impact study. She is with us tonight, but I realize the hour is getting late. And I think the salient points are on the table. It's, it's mostly a parking issue. We get it. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Dan?
The parking signs that are no parking that are along your property line, are those, was those from the landlord or are they from the town judge?
No, and that's a great question because I asked the same thing until I turned across the street and I noticed that the firehouse is across the street. So there's no parking in front of the firehouse so that the large vehicles can get in and out. That's why those are there.
All right.
Those are town signs along, get away.
All right. Okay, hold on, hold on, hold on.
We never had an issue about legally parking near vehicles. We were strictly talking about obstruction and sidewalk.
Yep, got it. That's been very clear, but thank you very much. All right. Thank you very much. That closes this public hearing. We need a motion to close the hearing and reserve our decision. Let's see, motion by Jerry, second, second by Ed, all in favor. The hearing, all in favor, it's approved. The hearing is now closed. This decision, though, is reserved in order for us to review all of the feedback we have received this evening and any open site plan issues. The record will remain open for written comments. To follow up on the status of the application or submit additional written comments, you can contact the planning department in a number of ways. In person, planning is located on the west wing of Town Hall. Application documents, plans are available for inspection between the hours of nine AM and four PM. That goes for environmental studies and also the traffic study. Number two, you can contact the planning department by phone, six-three-one-nine-five-seven-three-one-zero-three, or via email, planningcomments, that's one word, at townofbabylon.com. Thank you very much. That concludes this public hearing. Okay, thank you. All right, we do have our second public hearing. If, why don't you call the hearing and we'll just let folks make a way.
Public hearing number two, job twenty-three forty-eight A, A and D Entrances, Inc. Purposes to construct a seven-thousand-square-foot footprint, two-story rear addition to an existing industrial building for additional warehouse space, along with associated site improvements.
Good evening, Chairman Haplen, yes, sir.
Hold on for a second, we'll wait for Juan to come in. Just bear with us.
Okay. After that hearing, I'm ready to go.
I understand that, okay. All right, we'll just wait for Juan, he, important meeting. It's good, you got your standing, your stretching.
That's right.
It's good for you. You're sitting too long, we apologize. Well, I've been sitting too long.
That's quite right. We'll get you in and out.
No, when I sit too long, my knee bothers, so. Can't, we'll all stand a little bit.
No surfing.
Okay. Okay. Soon as Dan gets back, we'll actually start. Juan will be here shortly. Okay, could you please state your name and address for the record?
Yes, for the applicant, Tom Abate, A-B-B-A-T-E. I'm an attorney with offices at eighty-eight Sunnyside Boulevard in Plainview.
Okay, Mr. Abate, have you had a chance to review the memo dated December twenty-seventh, twenty-twenty-four from the planning commission regarding this application?
I have, and I've reviewed it with my client, and we agree to all of the terms and conditions stated therein.
Covenants and restrictions?
Fine. Everything's fine. Went over them in detail with our client.
Okay, please proceed.
Thank you. So this application, Chairman Haplen, members of the board, concerns a proposed extension to an existing industrial site. The subject premises is one-oh-five Wyandance Avenue. Wyandance Avenue is an east-west running roadway significantly north of the southern state, but really at the top of the triangle where Straight Path and Jenkins Avenue meet. Straight Path on the west and Jenkins on the east. It's a two-point-six-two acre parcel located wholly within the GA industrial zone and on which sits a main building of just over thirty thousand square feet with a rear portion of seven thousand square feet. Our proposal before you tonight is to erect a two-story addition directly abutting that rear bump out, and that will also measure seven thousand square feet. It will follow the existing building lines of the rear addition. So I bring that up because it will be no closer to new avenue than the structure already is, nor will it be any closer to our industrial neighbor to the east. The purpose for the extension is a very, very good one. Business is good. We need the space. A and D Entrances is involved in the elevator business, a component of it. So what they do is they fabricate the cabs, the, the place where you stand in itself, as well as the sliding door and the frames. They were established in two thousand and seven, and they had been doing it in Jamaica, Queens, until they found this site in two thousand and seventeen and they purchased it. So since they purchased this site, they have moved their entirety of the operation to the town of Babylon. The addition, which forms the subject of this application, is solely going to be used for fabrication and storage. Our office component, which measures roughly twenty-eight-hundred square feet, is not going to change. So this is solely for storage and fabrication use. Naturally, the addition requires us to provide the requisite off-street parking because that's all for warehousing, it'll be a one per seven-hundred under two thirteen, two-eighty-six J of our code. And as you can see from our site plan, we are going to augment our existing parking by adding nineteen new stalls along the new avenue frontage, plus one handicapped accessible stall. We are also going to install landscaping for that entire new avenue frontage, but for, in the northeast corner, Mr. Esposito, thank you, that is our crash gate entrance. So emergency vehicles will be able to access that site. So but for that curb cut there or the crash gate, all of that will be landscaped. Despite the fact that we are adding the off-street parking, we still will be deficient. So if we receive the imprimatur of this board tonight for our proposed addition, we will require an off-street parking variance, both in terms of the magnitude, because we'll be providing seventy-three when ninety-six are otherwise required, and for front yard parking, because we exceed the permissible number of stalls in the front yard that we're allowed to have under two thirteen, two-eighty-six U of our code. That is the substance of our application. I have our project engineer, Chris Voorhees, from the firm of Nelson &amp; Pope with me tonight if you have any specific questions. And he's joined by Isabel De Souza from Nelson &amp; Pope's Architectural Department. I really have nothing further to add.
Any of the board members have any questions? No? Okay. Are the number of employees going to increase?
No, so the number of employees won't increase. And that's because we need the space for the storage of the cabs, et cetera, and for materials that come in. We take, we don't, there's no pickup at the site. So in terms of intensity, once we build it, we ship it out for delivery, and then they come back to the site. Our hours of operation, the shop operates seven to three, Monday through Friday, the office operates eight to four, Monday through Friday. Nothing beyond that, no Saturdays, no Sundays.
Matt, go back to that site plan, please. The one that shows all the parking that it currently exists.
The existing condition plan?
Mm-hmm. So there's more, there's more than sufficient parking now for the number of employees that are there and they anticipate that not changing. Is that correct?
We, we, yes, we have excess parking on site right now. And with the addition that Mr. Voorhees of the twenty stalls, we will still have excess parking. Naturally, I have to make those proofs before the zoning board of appeals, but as you can surmise, this is a very low intensity use.
Right, understood.
I'm wondering if you want to rent it to the other guy.
I don't like to inherit problems.
You know what? They've got it all under control. You know, there's an old expression, let sleepy dogs lie. Okay, Mr. Voorhees, do you want to add anything?
I can, just one.
Hold on, come up here and give us your name and address.
Of course.
Do we have to swear you in?
Christopher Voorhees, Nelson &amp; Pope, Seventy Max's Road, Melville, New York.
You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do. I just wanted to clarify, the, the eastern side of the, the buildings do have a slight shift. We are still within the setback requirements. I just wanted to make sure the clarification was on the record.
Yeah, understood. And that, and the additional parking requirements as a result of the expansion for the storage, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Julianne?
Matt, can you go back to the aerial, please? So it appears in the corner by New Avenue, are those storage containers that are currently there?
Yes, we have some storage containers at our site.
Hold on, come up to the microphone.
I'm sorry.
So we get that in order.
I'm sorry. So there are storage containers on the site there right now. The bulk on the left side after the lawn, that's all of our neighbors, Klein, quote K-L-I-N-E.
Any other questions? No questions?
Our, our plans do specify that the existing onsite storage will be removed on the existing conditions and demo plan.
Okay, very good. Thank you for getting that on the record. Anything else? No? Is there anyone from the public that would like to address the board? No? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
All right, we need a motion to adjourn this meeting and reserve the decision. Let's say motion by Juan.
Motion to close this hearing.
Second by Dan, all in favor.
Aye.
The hearing is closed. The decision has been reserved in order for us to review. Any open questions or any issues that may come up? The record will remain open for written comments. To follow up on the status or submit additional written comments, you can contact the planning department in a number of med, different methods. In person, it's located on the west wing at the planning department of Town Hall. The application documents and plans are available for inspection between the hours of nine and AM and four PM. By telephone, six-three-one-nine-five-seven-three-one-zero-three, or via email, planningcomments@townofbabylon.com.
Thank you.
Thank you.